What PM the school board is not called on the session. First, I will say it's a pleasure to see everybody. I've seen everybody being safe. Have everybody look over the financial report, I mean agenda first. Any questions about the agenda? Everybody have to look over the financial report. Anybody have any questions about the financial report? Everybody have to look over the three previous board meetings. Any questions about those? Can I ask what's the agenda for financial, the financial reported, previous board minutes?
Thank you.
Yeah, most of the second for the question, I think you both are. I'll pull you the same side approved. All right, next we have is the superintendent's report.
Yes, and I've given that to you tonight as an office holder. I'm not going to read everything, and if you have any questions later, you can certainly come back and ask me. You're the permanent director, but there are a few things that we want to highlight. And on our enrollment, we are at six twenty-five, which is our three quarter average from last year as well. So we're saying about it, well, but actually six twenty-four is what we will be funded on because they will not count pre-K. So we were still laying on some students from last year. And on nursing and wellness, we've got some springs coming up. We have seen a surge, and we've talked about this in a former panel meeting. You know, with our COVID cases, it's coming back from Christmas break, and it seems to be hitting us fine now. And but we are expecting some back tomorrow, and I'll go over those numbers in just a minute. And we also do have a dentist interested in working with us in our wellness center, Scott Bird from Philadelphia. And the former dentist, Dr. Lee, he's expanded into Hot Springs or Royal Rock, and it's just hard for him to commit. He said he'll still try to help when he can if we have a situation, but certainly it's not a, it's an amicable and break right now with him, but he's still there for us if needed. And then Dr. Bray is still working to get those medical services reestablished, and I'm suspecting right now it's likely to cover a little delay. Those things a little longer. On page two, our COVID date, this is at five o'clock this afternoon. And someone went through, you know, everything that she was out of thought of today. And right now, we currently have six active positive cases with our student population and thirty-one others in quarantine, either as a close contact or they're symptomatic and getting tested, or someone in their household is getting tested. And that is down from last week. On staff, we have seven active positive cases, eleven in quarantine for other reasons. And today, we did have a high number of absences that were not all COVID-related. But many of them were, but some were scheduled to be back today, and we're still symptomatic. We're expecting more back tomorrow. So the principals today, we worked on plans to get our kids back tomorrow with the staff that we have. And but we have a total of five students or staff currently in isolation or quarantine. We did serve meals. We did offer meal service for students who were out on AMI days. We sent out an order form that could do a Google form, or we gave the phone number that they could call to order for pickup, and we did serve forty-one meals last week for each day, and then fifty-eight meals today. So we had an increase today in the number of requested meals. And our cafeteria staff went over to primary school and went up and put those together, and then had to get from twelve to one. Transportation, you know, anyone willing to drive a bus, we need subs on our buses in a bad way. And Dustin is willing to work with people and help them through the process, you know, train them, work with them. And that if you know anybody that might be willing to do that, be on the touch with Dustin, and he will, he will work on that because we're, we're low on it. We did just get two more coaches stepped back to give them a call by one, so we, we should have a P more right now. And roofing, and they finished at the best shop maintenance and high school. They've been working on that campus now, and we'll be moving down to the middle school shortly. And they'll do all the, the roof, and then they'll come back and do the siding portion. And so you'll really notice it, I think, when I get off that, on the, if they are moving first. Right. On that. Okay, on page three, Coach Jackson did give an update on our basketball and other things. But again, with COVID, everything is subject to change on a day-by-day basis. We have had canceled a few games. He works with the A.D. and other district. They try to have a reschedule. If it's a conference game, if not, sometimes we don't worry about it, but he's been working with them. And then I've been contacting superintendents and AAA, notifying them with those changes. And Mr. Sprague submitted some things going on at primary school. And one thing I did want to highlight on page four is their after-school program that they've started. And we are using the S.R. funds for the, like, what it's called, Jeremy. Those are funds to
Oh, learning loss?
Learning loss, that's, yeah. So we've got sixty to seventy-five students participating in that at the primary. Oh, are we?
I think that's coming out of ESA, correct, Rhonda? If I haven't misremembered.
Okay, so sixty to seventy-five students participating in that, and he's got some pictures here and things that they're working on. And probably, probably map reading, scavenger hunt, things like that. Now, we still have slots in our pre-K program. If you know anyone that wants that. And Ms. Jones at the middle school submitted, they finished their winter map assessment in December. That's our NWEA testing tool, measuring progress of our students. And in this chart, I'm at them reading, and the bar graph on the, in each set to the left is the growth that students made. The red, the bar next to it on the right is the expected growth. So they're real pleased that the students have more growth than anticipated based on previous things. So they are feeling good about the progress.
I'm going to, this is just for me, green.
I know it is. I'll try to get y'all better. I'll, you know, you want a little bit bigger.
Because we already can see that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read, I'll see, now you have better graph. And high school, Ms. She might reported, you know, on some things they did during professional development, working with our veterans support program, we visiting that. Also, the phone policy, she met with her staff, and then we met with each class individually that first week back to go over that policy as well. And Ms. Manning, kind of giving you an update on what's going on in her different grade levels in the GT program. Page six, special aid, we're working on our transition means to school. Literacy update and hub update on page six. My thing I did want to point out in HUD, the very last sentence of that section, we do have currently seven senior HUD students on track to graduate May. So that's a positive reason. Is that still current? Yes. You know, these are students that may not have graduated otherwise, and so we're really excited that this program worked for them. And Mr. Bill has included updates on all of the areas that he manages. And has also in his section on page, well, it's after page nine, has also given the chart of the approved programs for our peer technical department this year. So those are areas we're able to offer classes in with our current teacher certifications. In the E.A., it's more of a progress monitoring, so that's not actually the state's assessment. So we're not wanting to, looking at what their expected growth is based on their performance throughout the year. So at the end of the year, we'll be able to see our state assessment data. So that's really just how are they progressing right now here through the year. That's our local progress monitoring. So that they can start our attention for those students. And Ms. Jones, if you have a question, she's, we have to explain that in more detail. She could not be here tonight. Okay, and then, or maybe into the items for action tonight, I did want to recognize our school board members. And this is the Board Appreciation Month, and this state of Arkansas. And I have a proclamation that I would like to read and then present each of you with certificate for your service. And because we do appreciate all that you have done, it has been a rough couple of years with COVID and things going on. And, and we know that you, you hear a lot, and you have to really work and support our district very much. We appreciate that. And our proclamation from the state of Arkansas. As whereas education is of paramount importance to the future of the state of Arkansas and the nation, with over four hundred and eighty thousand children to meet the more than eleven hundred public and charter schools in Arkansas. And whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and help each student become productive citizens, contributing to a democratic society. And whereas local school board members must be committed to the success of our children as they work to ensure that every child arrives with educational programs tailored to make it to our individual needs. And whereas Arkansas school board members contribute countless hours to fulfilling their roles and responsibilities, committing the mission for their districts, establishing and enforcing policies, overseeing school district finances to ensure alignment with academic facility needs, hiring and evaluating superintendents, and approving the selection of curriculum to make certain our students are offered top-of-the-line courses to study. School board members are required to participate in annual training to enhance their knowledge and skills to better serve their students and communities. And the hundreds of local school board members in Arkansas receive no compensation for the time and effort they contribute on behalf of their schools. So the governor of Arkansas declared January twenty-two as Arkansas School Board Member Recognition Month across the state, and encourages its fellow citizens to honor and support school board members throughout Arkansas for their significant contributions to our children's future. And I just want to say, I said every word of that. We do spend countless hours with no compensation, and we appreciate what you do. And I do want to present each of you with certificate. And then also moving, before we move into the action items, Mr. Hatley, we do have one school board member, and we talked about those external training hours, that has now reached fifty hours of board development training during his tenure. And that is play for it. And so Arkansas School Boards Association has sent a plaque honoring that commitment to your further education. Chris Harper also has met this milestone, so I'll present his to him at the next school board meeting.
School board trainers, you, it's already thirty-two hours, hold on. Next is, we're at the mask mandate. What are we going to do? Are we going to continue what we have on food, or are we going to get something else?
And this is just talked about, what you approved last month by my notes.
Again, questions? How do we feel about it? About what? Keep it going?
My?
Everyone, the revolution team.
That's the page thirty-two, what's underlined. They added pink to the manufactor we met because the numbers kept getting higher and higher. So I did strike their orange, red, and purple, and just put in the orange or yellow range because hopefully they don't have to add any more colors to the map, but being that's specific. It's going to be better, higher.
I'd like to hold it, keep it like it is. Keep it like it is. I'm in favor, I think you both said I, I pulled you the same side. All right, the next thing is our master plan. I'm sorry, the cameras. We have a request, you know, purchase cameras for twenty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, twenty-three cents. Anybody got any questions about the cameras? Where are these cameras going?
Sorry, I can address some of that. I know there's a chunk of them on my campus. I've got a couple that are out. So Victor's replacing some older cameras, maybe five or ten years old. Then I've got certain blind spots, like we had a break-in in the gym. I didn't have any cameras that covered that break-in, so we've, we've gone and kind of looked at covering the playground where they typically come in when they try to play, break into the gym and inside the gym, so we could see. And, and it's, it's been told to me that in history, there were a lot of break-ins in the past, but they typically just went in and played basketball and left. They, they proud the door open or something, so at least we would kind of have an idea who's getting into the gym. So a good portion of those cameras are on my campus where I've got a bunch of gaps.
And then others are on the high school campus and some areas outside, in the gym, or areas that were not covered previously with cameras. Can't remember how many, do you remember how many, Ms. She might on the campus, Victor was going to be.
I believe there's six.
I think it was six on hers and seven on mine.
But just take care of some areas that are not covered, and this will help us not just, you know, with close contact tracing, but also safety, security, things like that that we need to check.
So the rest of, just we're running on the grounds? Was it a total?
Um, no, it's, it's thirteen.
Oh, okay, I'll see it now.
And four. There's two different types, and so you've got
The outdoor and the indoor.
The mounting piece, yeah, the outdoor and the indoors. There are seventeen total, and the seventeen license and for the software, the subscription for that. So that we can go in remotely and see. And this will be able to use some of our non-operating funds for, for safety.
So we already got four mounting kits for those four cameras? I'm looking at, it's well, I'm looking at seventeen cameras, but thirteen mounting kits.
They're domes, so they'll come through the ceiling.
Some of them are going to have to mount on the outside of buildings, and some of them will go inside these tiles.
Some of those, I'm saying, I'm around, just to be a chance.
Right.
The white will be, that's all. The down ones, I was typically, the ones you'll see in the ceilings, and you can actually sometimes turn those to be in different directions. Like if you have it turned one way, where sometimes it'll get you a thirty-six TV.
So I mean, I
I think Victor probably knew which ones he needed the kits for, and which ones he didn't.
Or these will be those four domes. The big indoor ones. The outdoor will be one to a specific place, or in the gym, one to different stops, these entrances.
So we don't have, I just wanted, so we couldn't get no three sixty outdoor cameras? But with the price?
I mean.
I honestly don't know the answer to that. The problem with three sixty cameras outside is you'd have to mount it on a tall pole, because you're going to have a building instruction. You're not going to get three hundred and sixty degrees. You can, might get one eighty, but whatever.
So they go and retrace, just do it directly.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I brought you about the request to purchase seventeen cameras and mounting kits.
Make it, make that, yes, hit, so like ten, ten.
So, we're working second, but the question I was going, I was thinking both are, I pulled you the same side. Cameras have been, how long will they get here?
Well, that's the order of work. I'm not sure. Did, did he say how long Victor said?
Well, there's no supply issue. I think we get them in a week.
I think, I think he didn't say anything about issue.
Again, a question I can keep doing.
Yes, and he was going to be here, he was.
Okay, now, master plan. Everybody have an opportunity to look over Thursday, view, look at the master plan. So we can move forward. What we got to do by master plan? Person open up questions if you relate to the master plan, if you have any. Good question.
We are not receiving public comments.
So there's no question, how the boys feel about the master plan? Real motion, and a second, except the last plan that we have discussed. No further questions. I'm in favor of the master plan, you both say I. I pulled you the same side.
And after the meeting, not only each of you to sign the resolution for the master plan.
Okay, the next thing is is there any other option?
Do you want to apply for state grant, matching funds? We need to tell her which one, you know, the larger platform, then we can define it later, but she presented the three options.
Yeah, I mean, those are. So this is, which option looks best for you?
I think we will, we'll, we'll. But some of them.
Only four times.
First, send it a print on.
If you go where, so we have any others that, that's against it, I did have a write-in vote, but I can't consider it since it's not here.
Maybe I have one question. Would maybe any possibility we would try to sell in on some of the details that we could get something printed that, you know, might help us better understand more of those details about the three options where, if we get approached, you know, with questions that we could maybe help deliver that to our people better.
I'm not sure than what she's already given, what, what details are you talking about?
Oh. Well, you know, and I'm, I'm sure it's part of my lack of understanding, but like, what parts will go together when we, if we did decide on one of those three options? So like I said, help what the potential voters are going to be.
Well, the option she presented was one was to do like an addition to the middle school, the classrooms to make that a K-six school. Move seven and eight to the high school campus and have a seven-twelve school. That was one option. And now there are actually two options that were that same thing, but one scaled back because the former plan really required more space than we require now, or asked for more space than we require. So she toned it down to just what our student population supports. And then the other was a standalone building that would house K-four or pre-K-four.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said, new building, that's what I
As well, so those are kind of the options, either in addition to reconfigure a K-six and a seven-twelve, or a standalone K-four that would have everything included, you know, where they wouldn't be sharing any type of facilities with any other campuses.
Yeah, that, that's why I'll keep it up.
Would be sharing staff, you know, maybe going back and forth on some, some areas, but I'm not sure. So those were the options she presented.
Where, where on campus have your favorite, where they're included?
And that's really kind of get someone to come look, you know, is, sorry, somebody can tell us where it could even be supported. Like I said, all this, all that's tentative. I mean, there's nothing said in time. We can amend things in the future too. But those were just the kind of options that she presented. I'm getting here.
There's more than the possibility of buying small land, you'll see this pine plantation at the back. It would kind of, you know, if we felt like we needed a little area, you know, for the new building, that if that would be, has been explored at all.
We haven't.
Ask your questions, or read the plan. If that was part of it, wouldn't it have to already be in the plan, or would we have to add that to the plan?
If we were going to purchase.
Purchase to do this? I'm looking at those plans, but they're already, already in.
Yeah, I think because we, I think we have to say that, you know, we may talk about new age or talk about other funding. It may have to be in there.
The key is, you're going to be approved by the state, or we can do anything.
And they won't build a pre-K, so it couldn't be a pre-K to follow up, so.
You have to go and put.
Though with the classroom space, though, a lot will have enough to house our pre-K. We can't fit it on the plan, but we will have space in it for other things that we will be able to. We, we feel confident that we can put our pre-K in there based on current enrollment.
Any other questions? We've already approved plan, so I just wanted you to know. You might want to let you. Okay, no further question on that. Let us move forward. The next thing.
Okay, sorry. Now, this didn't have a specific plan, the resolution. It just says the district's exploring options for any space, but she needs to know
Exactly what we doing.
Which option, yeah.
Because we need to decide.
She has to submit that. She has to give us something in February to approve for her, submit by March first at state for matching fund. So she needs to know, do you want her to apply for standalone or for an addition? Which one do you want her to apply for to see if we're even approved or not?
I need just, yeah, I recommend a standalone.
Now, have we done a standalone and played, we decided to change our mind to add on because of the room?
We can amend our plans. Usually we can submit an amendment, it just prolong, you know, you just have to kind of go back to the process.
That's just what I'm saying, you know.
You can amend or decline.
So we, just so how we can get this plan, or ain't got enough room, could we deal?
We could amend it and resubmit.
We're going to do anything on the.
Yeah, we can decline as well.
And all we know, staying a standalone is, I remember the community input, and they, they prefer they will be by themselves.
Yeah, that was, that was what I, a lot of people.
Yeah, what do you think? Go, now we gotta forget what we putting in there for her.
I want to, I want to, so standalone, but.
Flex. Motion, second, I've got a question. All yous both say I in favor? Oppose you the same side? Ooh, we can ask, well, you know, back to.
I'm standing on.
This is I feel a question, I feel a question through, is it a question we can get out now? I feel a question. Am I got a question?
But if we submit this plan, that doesn't mean it's going to be like an immediate thing. We've, we've got down the line that we don't want to do this.
See, we, you know, you're saying we can, we can just decide that we don't not do it at all. You know, you say, we can, we can just decide that we don't not do it at all. Or we can just decide, basically what we're looking at, we need to make some changes. We're not locked in here. But we, I know, I mean, we, we have to give them something for a master plan. I mean, I want to make sure everybody got a question back there. All right, no further questions. The next thing is, is personnel package. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask to be going to executive station.